I just think that.
And the parents are like, oh, you have children, yeah.
Attitude as it is, the policies.
Why is that messy? I'm crying. I know, I know. And now we're just having a lot of.
And I sound. Yeah. You're all here.
I'm like, yes. That's why I'm like, I don't remember. I didn't know what I was trying to say. I'm like, what? I'm like, I can't hear my audio every week. I think that's why I'm like, I don't know. I don't know what I'm doing. It's your thing. I can't. Yeah. Yeah, I have to look at your. You're wearing a hat. They like, uh, yeah. I'm sorry, that is. I always. Marriage, you should have. It's great. Oh, yes. I'll be. I'm. That's. Yeah. That's. So they were. Yes. You. That's. I love. I just never. True. Yeah, I know. I'm. I don't know. Yeah, I know. I don't know. I'm. And this year. This is. I don't know. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. There is. Yeah, I'm on separate. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. I'm sure. I'm. I was like. Call me. Don't forget. And then. Everybody. I'm. Yeah. So we got. Right now. Let's. Yeah. Sorry. I. I. He's. He's. Yes. And this will. No, it isn't. Now. Stay. Now. But really. Happen. Right. We could say. Like, I believe. Bye. Bye. The. I want to see this. My. See. Next. I think. I know. I. I'm. 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 What's. I'm. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. Yeah. Actually. Yeah. I think there's a problem. A third. So. And. Yeah. She's. I have to hear. So she's. You're happy. And. Oh, they have to. Save us. Why? That's great. Hey, I'm. Stay. Yes. 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 I really love the way. It's. It's. I'm. I'm. It's. Every day. I can't. I'm. 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 My. Has. I'm. I'm. I'm.
Good evening. We're going to be starting the hearing in a few moments. Did everybody sign in and check to see if you wanted to speak tonight?
It works.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ellsworth Havens.
Good evening.
Ignore the guy behind the curtain. My name is Ellsworth Havens. I am a member of the State Health Planning Board. Joining me tonight is Stephanie Mazgai, who is Assistant Commissioner.
Jamie, I can't hear anything.
Where's the court reporter?
We're.
Where's she?
Okay, I can hear you again now. I just heard. Assistant Commissioner, and then it cut out.
Okay.
Okay. This is a. This is a public hearing of the State Health Planning Board in relationship to two. Two certificate of need applications. The first certificate of need application is for change in membership of the St. Francis Medical Center nonprofit corporation to the Capital Health as the sole corporate member and the relocation of services from St. Francis Medical Center to Capital Health Regional Medical Center. And the second is a certificate of need application for the closure of St. Francis Medical Center. The department deemed the application complete, and in accordance and requirements of law, the State Health Planning Board is required to hold a public hearing on this application within 30 days of this action. Adequate notice of this hearing has been published in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 26, colon, 2H dash 15.8. Notice was sent to the Secretary of State, who posted the notice in a public place. Copies of the hospital's certificate of need application are available for review at the Trenton Free Public Library, the New Jersey State Library in Trenton, and the Department of Health. Information gathered at this hearing will be reviewed by the State Health Planning Board, in addition to reviewing the application from Capital Health Systems, Inc., and the department's staff analysis and recommendations in a public meeting. Although not all members of the State Health Planning Board are present tonight, the community public hearing is being transcribed, and this transcript, along with any written comments submitted tonight, will be made available to all board members, along with the transcript and written submissions prior to the meeting to review this application. There'll also be limited time available at the next public meeting of the State Health Planning Board to hear from members of the public. At that meeting, the applicant will be present, will present the application, and answer questions the board may have. In the interest of making efficient use of time for tonight's hearing, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. If you have longer written comments with you, please provide a copy to the board, and they will be added to our record. Anyone interested in speaking tonight should sign in on the speaker sheet at the entrance to the auditorium, and I suggest, if you haven't already, please do that. Anyone who wants to submit written comments after tonight's hearing and before the board meeting is urged to do so. Such comments must be submitted no later than Wednesday, November 2nd, and should be addressed to the State Health Planning Board and care of the Department of Health. For those of you unfamiliar with the certificate of need process, the State Health Planning Board will vote on a recommendation as to decision on this application, which will be submitted to the Commissioner of Health. The State Health Planning Board's hearing is part of the certificate of need process, and your comments will be considered as we review issues related to health planning, hospital-related healthcare services, and access to healthcare services. Your comments are an important part of this process, and we will be considered, along with all other material submitted by the applicant. The board can recommend approval of this application, approval with conditions, or denial of this application before it. The commissioner will make the final decision on the application after the board makes its recommendations. Thank you. We'll begin now with the process of people testifying. The first one is. Is Robin Vaughn. Yes, please.
Speaker. Podium is to the right.
And soon she gets up there. Great. Please state. Please state your name.
Yes. My name is Robin Vaughn. I'm here as a representative of the City of Trenton. I sit and serve on this Trenton City Council, and I represent the West Ward. Also, I'm a taxpayer and resident of the city as well. I just wanted to make a comment regarding the transfer of services from St. Francis Hospital to Capital Health. It's a very complex transaction, and it's not one that I'm against, but I am certainly for. So in support of a very thorough and transparent. Capital expenditure plan or analysis. I don't really fully understand what components or variables or criteria that is set forth in a certificate of need application, but I would definitely want for my city. To see and to understand the cost of this transaction and whether our government. Government, state government, federal government can come up with the necessary funding that can support this type of transaction and make it successful. And ensure that whatever funding that's going to be provided, that it stays in the border of the city, and it stays to help build out and redevelop the area and the hospital, even to perhaps to be a level-one trauma center. And to ensure that the business and the development of the of the area is also funded. And those are, that's primarily my comment, and I hope the capital expenditure plan is made available and that the board, the health, the New Jersey Department of Health board considers that just as seriously as it considers providing the services, the medical services and the health services that a top-tier hospital provides in a capital city with the socio-economic demographic that is Trenton. Thank you.
Thank you. Our speaker. Our next speaker, Mr. Magazine. If you could, please, spell your name for the record and your physician.
Okay. Al. A.L. M.H.A.Z.E.H.E. I'm the President and CEO of Capital Health.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Al Magazine, President and CEO of Capital Health. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly. Speak this evening. As you heard, St. Francis Medical Center and its current owner, Trinity Health, have determined that after several years of struggling, St. Francis cannot continue to operate. Early this year, they signed a definitive agreement with us for Capital Health to take over services from St. Francis Medical Center pending the regulatory approval. We signed this agreement because Capital Health shares the community's very real concern that critical healthcare services remain in Trenton. We want to save services, jobs, and that that will be lost to the City if St. Francis closes without the approvals needed for Capital Health to take over these services. Because of the serious situation St. Francis is in, this is happening very quickly. So a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Capital Health will continue to operate an emergency department in East Trenton. This was an issue that's been brought up in many of our community meetings that we've been attending, and I'm committing to you, it's a requirement by the state that we have a satellite emergency department where St. Francis is located, in that area, and that's a forever requirement. And I'm committing that we will make sure that that actually happens. We're working to get the necessary approval to make sure services remain in Trenton, including behavioral health and cardiac surgery. So we already have a very significant behavioral health program at Capital Health in in Trenton. We are going to double the size of that to absorb what what's in St. Francis. And and that's another commitment. In terms of cardiac surgery, no question, between the corridor between Camden and New Brunswick, there is no cardiac surgery program. As we are sitting right here, if you look at that corridor from Camden to New Brunswick, there is no cardiac surgery program. This is not just threatening Trenton. This is going beyond Trenton. This program absolutely has to stay in Trenton to save lives, as it is today, St. Francis is. If approved, the emergency department and internal medicine clinic and other. Other programs will be at St. Francis' site for at least near term. Why do we say near term? Because we have, at least we're trendy, to stay. In that location for 18 months post-closure. So we're at least going to be there for 18 months, hoping that during those 18 months, something will happen there, and there's a new development or something of that nature. If that doesn't happen, we're still required to be in that location. We just have to find a place quickly. Hopefully, that won't be necessary, and we'll we'll be able to stay there. So will the CARES program, which is an important service for our youth in need of behavioral health services.
That's 20 seconds.
Yes. Long-term Capital Health will develop a new emergency department, and outpatient side near the current St. Francis site will share more as we know more about Capital Health East Trenton. We'll share with the community. Capital Health Regional Medical Center in also in Trenton will become the new location for many other services currently provided at St. Francis. This will include cardiac surgery, if approved by Department of Health. Having trauma, neurosciences, cardiac surgery services in the same location makes sense, and Regional Medical Center is already home to Bristol Myers, Squirt Trauma Center, and Capital Health Comprehensive Stroke Program. We also plan to add a Capital Health OBGYN at ambulatory care office in the area of St. Francis to meet this important need, and will continue to operate the life program currently run by St. Francis. Finally, I want to note that Trinity Health will continue to own the buildings and property on Hamilton Avenue. Capital Health has identified a developer who's interested in taking the current site from Trinity to redevelop the site after the old building comes down. It's simply not feasible to try and upgrade the current facility. If redevelopment happens, Capital Health would make a significant commitment to remain onsite as an anchor tenant for an emergency department and outpatient services in that location. Our belief is that these services need to remain in Trenton, and we're committed to doing all we can do to make sure that that happens. We hope members of the community recognize the critical nature of making this happen and support our efforts, because Trinity Health will close St. Francis Medical Center regardless. We know St. Francis has long history in the Trenton community, and that is something that we all respect and appreciate. Now we must work together to make sure Trenton continues to have important services like cardiac surgery available to its residents, along with critical emergency care in East Trenton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dan Moen. Once again, if you could, please spell your, this for the record.
Sure.
Spell your name and your physician.
My name is Daniel Moen. D.A.N.I.E.L. Last name M.O.E.N., and I am the President and CEO of St. Francis Medical Center. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to make some opening comments in support of the proposed acquisition of St. Francis Medical Center by Capital Health Systems through a member substitution. Again, I'm Daniel Moen, President and CEO of St. Francis, and it has been my honor to serve in this role for the past four and a half years. St. Francis was founded in 1874 by the Sisters of St. Francis of Philadelphia, and has been dedicated to being a healing, transforming presence in our community ever since. Over the last several years, however, St. Francis has experienced a significant decline in volume and financial performance that is not sustainable going forward. Financial losses were made dramatically worse by the COVID-19 pandemic that adversely impacted all New Jersey hospitals. In addition, the St. Francis physical plant would need significant capital investment to upgrade or replace existing facilities, and this investment is not feasible. As a result, starting as far back as 2015, our Board of Trustees, and our board chair, Dr. Joe Young, but is here tonight. The board and Trinity Health has been seeking a healthcare partner and has solicited proposals from numerous potential partners. A small number of organizations expressed interest and were evaluated against criteria that included compatibility with our mission and values, commitment to preserving as many jobs as possible, financial strength, commitment to meeting the needs of the local community, and ensuring the retention of clinical services for our communities underserved. Set against this criteria, two organizations submitted proposals, but after due diligence, dropped out. During this time, we considered all options, from partnering with other health systems, building an ambulatory care center, or freestanding emergency department with observation beds, even building a small heart hospital. None of these options were found to be financially viable or sustainable. In 2020, Capital Health presented a proposal that meets our board's criteria and ensures that a broad range of healthcare services will remain in Trenton. The St. Francis Board voted unanimously to proceed with this proposal. By Capital Health, an intensive planning for the transition has continued since. St. Francis has great confidence and faith in Capital Health's commitment to the communities we now serve together. Capital Health is well positioned to ensure that local residents have access to a comprehensive, integrated clinical network that will combine its health services and ours. Certain key healthcare services, such as cardiac surgery and other advanced cardiovascular services, will continue to be available in Trenton as part of Capital Health.
30 seconds, please.
By linking St. Francis programs within a larger capital network, we can ensure that our community members will continue to have access to needed tertiary-level services close to home. Capital Health is also committed to continuing our School of Nursing and our School of Radiology Technology. Those are important programs for this community, and also our life program, Life St. Francis. Capital Health has also interviewed or will interview virtually every St. Francis employee, was requested an interview, and many of our employees have or will receive job offers. Most St. Francis employees who are not hired by Capital Health will be eligible for the current St. Francis severance plan. In conclusion, I want to highlight that throughout our history, St. Francis has adapted to preserve our mission. It took many years to arrive at this decision, one that we feel is right for our community. The proposed acquisition of St. Francis by Capital Health is the best and only option that we have. I respectfully ask that the St. Francis Capital Health acquisition be approved to move forward so that healthcare services for our community can be strengthened and preserved. And on a personal note, two years ago, I was diagnosed with atrial fibrillation, a potentially serious issue. I could have gone anywhere for my care, and I needed a complex cardiac ablation. I chose St. Francis. I knew that I would be treated by a top-notch team of cardiologists, nurses, and technologists, and that a highly skilled cardiac surgery team would be there to provide care in the event of a complication. My outcome was excellent, and that is the level of care that we want to preserve and strengthen for our community. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker. And once again, if you'd spell your name and title for the record, please.
M C B R I D E, Trenton City Council President. I wanted to speak tonight based on my experience as a lifelong Trentonian. I wanted to speak to Capital Health, and I would like to speak to the Board. Two years ago, someone made the decision to say St. Francis Hospital was not equipped to stay in business and keep the cardiac care unit there, or the patients. The sad thing about that is, they never involved the Trentonians. From my experience with Capital Health Systems, when Mercer Hospital left the borders of Trenton, they had a satellite hospital, a satellite care station, or whatever you want to call it, on Bellevue Avenue, which was a complete failure. As a lifelong resident of the city of Trenton, you could see people in the streets that could not get the attention, the medical attention that they needed in order to prevent illnesses or to treat illnesses. I also want to talk about the $100 million that they are proposing to put into Trenton. I don't know where the $100 million is coming from, because they never included us in that conversation. As a duly elected official, I represent 90,000 individuals. I was reading that there were 53 hospitals that received monies throughout the state of New Jersey, but Capital Health was not one of them. I believe Robert Johnson received $9 million, and Princeton Medical Center received $16 million. So when you tell me that you're going to put $100 million into this Brunswick Avenue site, Helling Pool, where is the $100 million coming from? Because the governor have not given Trenton any monies. So, when you talk about a GYN facility, all of a sudden, that's important to you, Capital Health System, when it wasn't important when you moved Mercer Hospital out to Hopewell and never, ever considered putting a bus route for the residents in the city of Trenton to get there. My concern is for the residents in the city of Trenton that I represent, and I am telling you right now, for my residents, I am full of fear. I am full of false promises. I am full of fear for the failed satellite system, and for only who knows where the $100 million is coming from. So, if Capital Health is going to do what they said they were going to do standing here tonight, I will be the first one to help champion that cause. But I have seen the effects of Mercer Hospital leaving the borders of Trenton, and I'm telling you, if you walk downtown in the streets of Trenton, you will see the mental health cases, mortality and the birth rate in the city, because Capital Health decided to leave Mercer. Listening, and I hope the Board will consider, where is that $100 million coming from? Why wasn't there a bus route put on to go to Hopewell, when in our demographics, they know most of the people cannot afford a vehicle and have no way to get to Hopewell? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Sharnay Moore, I believe it's Zervis? Sorry if I pronounced it wrong.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Sharnay Moore Jervis, S H A R N E E, Moore, M O O R E hyphen J E R V I S. I'm the Dean of the School of Nursing at St. Francis Medical Center. It's a position that I've held for about three and a half years, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about the state of support on proposed transfer of St. Francis Medical Center to Capital Health. Our faculty, staff, and graduates of St. Francis Medical Center have been committed to excellence in patient care since 1905. When the school was founded, since then, there have been about 3,900 graduates that have contributed to various aspects of nursing and healthcare in our community and throughout the United States. We are also proud when our graduates remain or return to St. Francis, including our current Associate Dean and also the Chief Nursing Officer for the hospital. As you know, nursing demands the best of those who choose this life's work. It calls for a keen mind, physical fitness initiatives, courage, and compassion for others. And we saw this especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. While at the same time, we recognize challenges our nurses faced at this time, as a result, many nurses left the field, either temporarily or permanently. And it's more important than ever that we support and continue programs like ours, to ensure we have nurses here locally to care for the Trenton and surrounding communities. The St. Francis School of Nursing is a two-year nursing program where our students receive their diploma, and they also receive an Associate of Science from the Mercer County Community College. This program offers an outstanding education in a caring and supporting environment. It also offers very, very affordable education for the community and the surrounding communities. We also offer several scholarship opportunities, lots of mentoring and advisement. We like to think that we set our students up for success in a program in order for them to be ready to start their nursing career immediately after graduation. We also lay a foundation to allow them to obtain their bachelor's degree. Having our program and its instructors within the hospital has always been a benefit to the students, but even more so during the pandemic. Many nursing students experience online learning, while our students, for only a short time, experience online learning, and then they were able to return right back to the bedside because we are a diploma program. Transitioning our program to Capital Health will continue this tradition. And additionally, if the transaction is approved, all of our instructors, who are currently at St. Francis, employees plan to transition to Capital Health. In conclusion, St. Francis School of Nursing is a key part of our community's healthcare education system, and we are committed to continuing our values and outstanding program at Capital Health. With your approval of the transaction to Capital Health, we can ensure this program will continue, and we recommend ourselves to the education and training of the nurses now and in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Susan Lowry.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Lowry. It's spelled S U S A N L O U G H E R Y, and I'm the Associate Executive Director for Catholic Charities, Diocese of Trenton. I'm here this evening in support of ensuring that all in our Trenton community have access to quality health services. As many of us know, the public health emergency has exacerbated the financial challenges and staffing shortages for all healthcare entities. Hospitals in particular are impacted by inflation factors pursuant to day-to-day operations and are in need to serve the community in broad ways to mitigate issues and improve social determinants of health. Safety net systems, as we have in the city of Trenton, are particularly impacted, as our community is underserved in many, many ways. Of note is that Trenton is a designated medically underserved area and healthcare provider shortage area. This means we need to do more with less resources, which is a challenge. However, the healthcare community of Trenton is a unique environment, with a provider culture of collaboration, innovation, and dedication to improving outcomes. Many of those initiatives are led by Capital Health, taking into consideration the needs of those being served. The forward-thinking leadership of Capital Health fosters partnerships and ensures that service lines are outcomes-driven. This acquisition will allow for sustainability for St. Francis Medical Center services, preserve jobs, and provide continuity of care for those receiving services. Furthermore, it will create the opportunity to create research and public health initiatives utilizing the strengths of both of these outstanding institutions. Catholic Charities, Diocese of Trenton, looks forward to working with both St. Francis Medical Center and Capital Health on this transformation. Thank you.
Thank you. Merody Hancock.
Thank you. Merody Hancock, M E R O D I E H A N C O C K, President of Thomas Edison State University. Being the only higher-ed institution headquartered in the city of Trenton, we are acutely aware of the responsibilities and services that an anchor institution provides for the city. St. Francis has been a longstanding pillar in our community, and the acquisition planned by Capital Health, another pillar in our community, is a key to ensuring the residents in Trenton and the surrounding neighborhoods continue to have access to comprehensive healthcare that meets their changing needs. It's therefore critical that the complex cardiac services, behavioral health, and other essential services offered at St. Francis remain in Trenton. Approving Capital Health's request ensures these services continue to be available now as part of Capital Health's established and financially strong care system, thus allowing for an integrated approach that will benefit our communities. As we emerge from the COVID pandemic, we continue to grapple with the healthcare inequities highlighted by this public healthcare crisis. The work that Capital Health is currently engaged in and planning to expand and preserve with this acquisition will be very important to start bridging the gap in access to healthcare and wellness within the city. Capital Health's commitment to provide a satellite emergency and a new outpatient facility to offer health and wellness service to residents, including primary and prenatal care, is one of the main reasons this merger is so necessary for our city. In addition, maintaining the certificate of need for cardiac services within Trenton is extremely important. Without this acquisition, the local cardiac services currently provided by St. Francis would be lost, widening the gap for specialized and critically needed care for Trenton's diverse population. It is for these reasons, as well as their longstanding commitment to Trenton, that I am in support of Capital Health's acquisitions, applications, and their vision for care in Trenton. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, the next speaker would be Lisa Zavor... Zavorzki.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Zavorzki, L I S A, Z A V O R S K I. I am the Executive Director of Life St. Francis, located in Bordentown, New Jersey. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today in support of the proposed transfer of St. Francis Medical Center to Capital Health. I support the transfer of St. Francis and Life St. Francis to Capital Health because it will ensure our program can continue to serve the needs of elderly and vulnerable residents in Mercer County and parts of northern Burlington County. Life St. Francis gives seniors 55 and older support to live safely in their own home or in the home of a family member for as long as possible. Each participant receives all-inclusive medical and social care based on a personalized care plan. This includes primary care, nutrition planning, social services, rehab and therapy when needed, and spiritual care. It includes specialty services like dental, podiatry, optometry, and audiology services. We coordinate all of the scheduling of medical appointments and transportation. We provide support in the home when it's needed. Of note, we took care of 353 participants throughout the pandemic, helping to keep them safe and surviving throughout that challenging time. Life St. Francis services are free, with no out-of-pocket medical cost to seniors who qualify. Prescription and over-the-counter medications and personal care products are provided at no cost, along with all durable medical equipment like walkers, canes, and grab bars. Services are provided by our interdisciplinary team of doctors, nurses, and professionals specifically trained to care for seniors. The team includes physical and occupational therapists, dieticians, social workers, along with a network of specialists like cardiologists, urologists, oncologists, and more. This team works together to meet the needs of our participants in body, mind, and spirit. Life St. Francis supports the participants' caregivers as well, who wish to keep their loved one living at home for as long as possible. And it helps our participants gain valuable social connections that are essential to mental health. Participants have the opportunity to make new friends and to develop new hobbies through our programs and events. We celebrate holidays together and offer sewing and card clothes and game groups. Our program is truly life-changing for many of our participants and their caregivers. They've described Life St. Francis as a true team approach where no detail is overlooked. Many families tell us that our services gave their loved one their life back. Families have told us our services are a relief and even a miracle. It would be a terrible mistake not to ensure a future home for this program to support seniors in our community. I urge you to support the transfer of St. Francis and Life St. Francis to Capital Health so that we can continue our mission and provide these essential services for the elderly in our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Paul Bethan. B E T H E N? Okay. Sorry, I was thrown off. He's not speaking. Jeanette Samansky? I think it's Saman. Once again, I apologize if I've had a problem with the name. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just a resident of the community.
Could you just give us your name, please?
Jeanette Samansky, J E A N E T T E, Samansky, S Z Y M A N S K I.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeanette Zemansky, and I live on Morris Avenue, about seven minutes from the hospital. When I first heard that St. Francis was going to close, I was shocked. How could this be? A pillar in our community. This is our community hospital. I lived here for 30 years, and this is my go-to hospital. This is my cardiac hospital where my heart surgeries have been done. I had to have angioplasty, and I had Dr. Andrew Swuff and Dr. Patel. I can't count how many times I went to the emergency room and had to be treated by Dr. Ben. I go so often that they know me by my first name. To lose St. Francis would be heartbreak to me. To go across town is a real inconvenience, and I would not be as comfortable as my hospital of St. Francis. Also, I got bit by a bulldog on Clyde Avenue this summer, off Hamilton Avenue. I take a blood dinner, and I was bleeding profusely. If I had to go across town, I would be in very bad shape. And if I had a heart attack, to go across town for a senior citizen is a matter of life and death. I can only pray that St. Francis remains where it belongs, in our community. Simply put, Capital Health is just too far to go to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did Fox? Hello, I'm David Fox, D A V I D F O X. I'm the Executive Director at Arm &amp; Arm. We provide three basic essentials for people in Mercer County in need. We provide food, housing, support, and also work experience. And I'm here in support of this initiative because of our experience with Capital Health in trying to help community partners in need. Currently, we partner with Capital Health to be able to provide food distribution for their patients. And we are looking at ways in which we can expand that help through their sites. And so we're very grateful that they've been welcoming of our food trucks and our staff and our volunteers to be able to come and to offer fresh food for people in need. We've seen an explosion of need in this last three years, and in fact, things are more difficult for people now than at every time before. It's very difficult for housing stability and other services, and people often in the community don't know where they can go to get help. I know there are other community partners right here that we work with closely, and one of the things that we do is when people come for food, we also have conversations with them, and we direct them to other essential services, not only with our organization, but with other organizations. And I think really, right now, we've been talking with some key people at Capital Health about expanding this and deepening this investment in time. And what's really wonderful, it's preventative healthcare. We're trying to provide better food for residents in a more holistic way, and we're trying to get to communities that are underserved. And so we are grateful for Capital Health's, you know, partnership, and we look forward to try to deepen that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Kolber?
My name is Michael Kolber. I'm a certified member of the American Institute of Certified Planners and a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. K O L B as in Boy E R. I'm here today as a resident of the city of Trenton. On January 28th, 2021, the city of Trenton became the first municipality in the state of New Jersey to adopt a Community Health and Wellness Plan as an element of its master plan. The plan does not anticipate the closure of our hospital as part of its strategy to improve access to quality healthcare. What it does do, in its first 40 pages, is document the startling inequalities in healthcare that the residents of Trenton experience. I don't have the time in my three minutes to address them all, but here's one simple one. The average life expectancy in zip code 08611, which is the zip code I live in, is 73 years, 14 years shorter than for babies born a short drive away in zip code 08550 near Princeton Junction. These inequalities need to be addressed by both Capital Health and by the state as they consider moving forward with the sale of St. Francis Hospital. I will discuss just two, but there are many more. First, there are no maternity services for women in Trenton. The city of Trenton is one of eight municipalities in the state identified as having particularly high levels of black infant mortality. Only 57.8% of Trenton women have what is considered to be adequate prenatal care. From 2009 to 2017, the maternal mortality rate in the city of Trenton was 37.2 deaths per 100,000 live births. In 2017, there were 1,407 babies born in Hopewell to women who live in the city of Trenton. Capital Health has stated that they plan to add an OB-GYN and prenatal care office in the area of St. Francis. This is good, but not sufficient. The city of Trenton must have a full birthing center and maternity ward. No Trenton woman should have to go to Hopewell to give birth. Second, the city lacks sufficient services for mental health care and substance abuse. Just two weeks ago, Trenton Health Team led a community advisory board meeting with a discussion on behavioral health and intervention services. In that meeting, the speaker clearly stated that the city does not have enough beds to provide needed inpatient services for behavioral health. It has been reported that the existing beds at St. Francis are not fully utilized. Clearly, they are just not being put to good use. 30% of Trenton's population does not own a car, public transportation is expensive, and accessing medical services outside of city boundaries poses a tremendous burden on our most vulnerable residents. At the same time, the fact that Trentonians can live without cars is one of the primary assets of this city. The New Jersey State Development and Redevelopment Plan specifically states that the priority for public investments in our state should be made in designated urban centers like Trenton to encourage population growth in the places that already have the infrastructure to sustainably support people and to ensure that we can maintain open green spaces in other parts of the state. The new Capital Health Hospital in Hopewell replaced an existing piece of urban infrastructure with a greenfield development outside of any population center. Let me say very clearly, the diversion of health services from cities to suburbs are not acceptable. If a service is provided in the suburbs, that service must be provided in the city. The construction of the hospital in Hopewell should by definition be treated as a declaration that Capital Health has plenty of money to invest in Trenton. The state must hold Capital Health accountable for making those investments. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Green?
Good evening. Darren Freedom Green, Darren, D A R R E N, Freedom, F R E E D O M, Green, G R E E N. My first point is to, we keep having these meetings, and again, one of the variables that keeps being consistently said is, after years of failing here in Trenton, you arrived at this decision. So my question as a community advocate is, when you began to see the trend going in this direction, why wasn't the community outreach done then? While I wait till you come to a point now where it seems like decisions have already been made, and the community now has to adjust and address to where we're going, and now we're kind of with our back against the wall. I think twofold process could have occurred. One, you could have been more authentic and transparent, reaching out to us earlier in the process. And if it's been years, then imagine how educated the public could have been on where we are now if you would have engaged us then. The second piece is, as you look at all the chairs here, and you hear numbers thrown out, like 90,000 people, as institutions and organizations here, you're not concerned that none of the people impacted by the magnitude of this decision are sitting here? You're not concerned about the narrative that consistently keeps being written, that these people have no worth, value, or care? Again, institutions are making decisions about people who live here, and the people who live here aren't even aware of what's going on. And my last piece is, when we keep hearing these words and these promises and these phrases, and you seem to see the disdain in our voices and our mannerisms, it's because we heard all of this before when Mercer was making its exodus out of here. And I'm not comparing the two, but I'm saying in Trenton, the way we are treated is like we're some type of stepchild, where we don't have a value and variable in the place where we live. And again, when we hear all these promises being made, and then when the final institution leaves, we sit and see Mercer Medical Center sitting there, and it's been abandoned for over 10 years. So there's a deep concern about what we're doing and how we're going to get there, but there's also resentment for the institutions who, almost like doctors and elected officials, have a sworn oath to serve and give to the people. But again, you treat us as if not only we're invisible, but there's no place for us here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Bear with us one second, please. Teresa Levitsky?
Good evening. It's Teresa, T H E R E S A, Levitsky, L E V as in Victor, I T S K Y. Thank you for allowing me to provide testimony today in support of the transfer of St. Francis Medical Center to Capital Health. My name is Teresa Levitsky, and I have served as the Program Director for the School of Radiologic Technology at St. Francis since 1990. I am also a proud 1982 graduate of the school. Founded in 1948, we are a two-year hospital-based program that prepares students for careers as radiologic technologists, commonly known as x-ray technologists. Many of our graduates work at St. Francis Medical Center and other Mercer County hospitals in a variety of roles, including leadership. With an annual enrollment of 16, we are a small school with a strong legacy. Our program has ranked either first or second in the state of New Jersey for the past three consecutive years. We know our students individually and create great learning experiences for them, and they, in turn, serve our community well. Just yesterday, one of our graduates from the class of 2022 texted me to say, in quotes, "I worked with a patient today who said to me, 'You must have gone to a really good school. You really know your stuff,'" end quotes. This kind of patient encounter is exactly what we strive for. We also partner with Mercer County Vocational Technical School and with Big Brothers of Big Sisters of Mercer County through a cooperative program with Trenton Central High School. These programs encourage students to consider careers in healthcare. This is the type of valuable community connections that we have, which have led several students from these programs to enroll in our schools. Having been an employee at St. Francis and part of this program for 42 years, I understand and personally share the sadness that some in our community feel about the transfer of St. Francis to Capital Health. Change like this is not easy, but it is a change I feel obligated to make. I am part of the transition planning team to transfer our school, including clinical rotations, to Capital Health. I want to take the legacy of the St. Francis Medical Center School of Radiologic Technology with all of our strengths and take it to its next chapter, to its next home. It is paramount that we continue to provide competent and compassionate radiology education and training for our community. To achieve that, I encourage you to approve the transfer of St. Francis to Capital Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker would be Gregory Paulson?
Good evening. My name is Gregory Paulson, G R E G O R Y P A U L S O N. I'm the Executive Director of Trenton Health Team. We are an independent community nonprofit focused on the health and well-being of the greater Trenton community. We were founded almost 20 years ago in response to changes in the healthcare delivery system in Trenton at that time, namely, the announcement of the planned closure of Mercer Medical Center, and we have certainly learned a lot since then. We're governed by an independent Board of Trustees that is comprised of leaders of local health and social service organizations, as well as other community leaders and supporters. And I should note that representatives of Capital Health and St. Francis serve on our Board, but in accordance with our conflict of interest policy, those board members have recused themselves from participating in any of our organization's decisions regarding our support for this matter. Our 45 staff work every day to support our community in accessing needed healthcare services while also working to improve the overall community conditions that impact health and well-being, things like access to healthy food, quality housing, and social supports. St. Francis has been providing excellent service, healthcare, and education to our community for more than 140 years. They've served some of the most socially complex, medically underserved, and vulnerable among us. And given that long history of compassionate service, the prospect of St. Francis's closure is understandably deeply painful for Trenton, especially in our community that lacks sufficient access to healthcare resources. But having access to healthcare does not necessarily mean having a place to be admitted to the hospital as an inpatient. It's about access to emergency care, primary and specialty care, prenatal and maternity care, and behavioral health and substance use disorder care. Those are the services that our data and our community members tell us are needed here. Over their long history and as a founding partner of Trenton Health Team, Capital Health has repeatedly demonstrated their commitment to Trenton, and we believe that Capital Health's proposal is firmly in the best interests of the health and well-being of the greater Trenton community and is the best possible outcome for the future of healthcare delivery in our community, and it therefore has Trenton Health Team's strong support. By consolidating the services of St. Francis Medical Center into their system, we hope that Capital Health is able to attract additional investment and economic growth as an anchor institution. We support their vision of expanding comprehensive healthcare services and medical education resources here in Trenton and to emulating successes that other academic healthcare systems have achieved in other New Jersey urban centers. Our support is strongly based on several commitments that Capital Health has made to us and in many public forums on many occasions. They are ensuring uninterrupted access to the critical services currently provided by St. Francis, including cardiac surgery, behavioral health, and other emergency care, to provide and maintain a satellite emergency department at or near the current St. Francis location, and to develop a new outpatient facility in that area of Trenton, offering a variety of services, including primary care and prenatal care, among others. And to be transparent with stakeholders and community members, and to actively engage in discussion, and to share information and solicit feedback. And that last point is an area in which we encourage everyone here tonight and who has participated throughout this process to continue to stay involved. Several executives from Capital Health came to our staff meeting last week and answered questions and heard concerns from our staff. It was an open and honest dialogue. I hope that many other individuals and groups continue to take advantage of those opportunities, not just now, but continuing long after this transition, if approved, takes place. The needs and perspectives of patients, neighbors, and community members are critical to the development and success of all new healthcare services that will follow. We will continue to provide our thoughts and input, and we look forward to continuing to help bring community together to ensure the access to the highest-quality healthcare services that our community needs and deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Eisenberg?
Hi. Joshua Eisenberg, J O S H U A E I S E N B E R G. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to talk tonight. I'm Dr. Joshua Eisenberg, a fellowship-trained vascular surgeon and director of the Heart and Vascular Institute at Capital Health. I came to Capital Health over 10 years ago with the goal to build a comprehensive heart and vascular program. Through that time, I came to truly understand the value of an integrated and comprehensive cardiovascular program. I learned the limitations of having only some specialties available, and I'm excited for the opportunity to be part of a complete service line. As Capital Health has shared in its application, we would like to retain the certificate of need for cardiac surgery and provide this care at our Trenton campus on Brunswick Avenue. Already, Capital Health Regional Medical Center is a designated, as an ACS-accredited, Level II trauma center and joint-commissioned certified comprehensive stroke program. Having seen firsthand the development of our neurosciences program and having worked alongside the physicians who lead our trauma program, Capital Health is uniquely poised to integrate cardiac surgery into our healthcare system, specifically in Trenton. Bringing cardiac surgery and the other related cardiac services to Regional Medical Center will allow patients improved access to comprehensive, integrated care. This presents a huge opportunity for patients in Trenton to receive tertiary and coronary care right in their neighborhood. Patients who have heart attacks, strokes, and traumatic injuries need a place they can go where their right physicians, equipment, staff, and resources can be combined to help the care for them. We have significantly experienced building complex service lines, and I know we We have significantly experienced building complex service lines, and I know we will continue to develop and grow this critical cardiac service line for the benefit of Trentonians and the broader community. Already, Capital Health has a significant number of elements of cardiac service line in the place, and the addition of cardiac surgery would round that out to provide comprehensive care and services for the patients in our area. With the integration of cardiac surgery into the already established programs at Capital Health, the number of cardiovascular patients that can be treated in the city of Trenton will greatly expand. With collaboration between specialties, complex conditions like aortic dissections, complex aneurysms, minimally invasive cardiac procedures, robotic cardiac surgery, heart failure, and other conditions can now be treated in Trenton. Even life-sustaining ECMO, a procedure to allow oxygenation to vital organs, can now be performed, which help further the outcomes of patients with respiratory failure from a variety of conditions, including COVID. We have nearly 60 cardiovascular disease physicians on our medical staff and around 10 who provide interventional cardiac services, and I suspect that number will continue to grow. Capital Health has developed plans for Regional Medical Center that will be implemented with the Department of Health's approval for two cardiac operating rooms, including one that can handle both endovascular and open cardiac procedures, and a cardiac catheterization lab capable of handling complex endovascular interventions and EP procedures. This will support vascular surgery, cardiac surgery, electrophysiology, and cardiac catheterizations. We also have space that will serve as a cardiac ICU, adding to our neuroscience ICU and trauma and medical ICUs. If the cardiac surgery left Trenton with the closure of St. Francis, it would leave a significant gap for patients between Camden and New Brunswick without another full-service hospital in our quarter offering cardiac surgery. In an area where cardiac disease is a significant issue and where access is critical, this would be devastating. As someone who has spent my entire career focused on patients with vascular disease, I cannot stress how important this is. Our trauma program, vascular program, neuroscience program, and psychiatry program in Trenton are sources of significant pride for Capital Health and our employees. And with your approval, we look forward to the opportunity to add cardiac services to that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deborah Preston?
Good evening. I'm Deborah Preston, D-E-B-O-R-A-H-P-R-E-S-T-O-N, and I am the President of Mercer County Community College. I've been the President of Mercer County Community College for not quite four months, but in that time, it has become abundantly clear that one of our most important partners in the city of Trenton is Capital Health and their associated Trenton Neighborhood Initiative. It's important to recognize that those of us in education share a common mission with our colleagues in healthcare, a mission to improve the lives of individuals and communities. Not everyone realizes that MCC has a campus in Trenton. It's our James Kearney Campus on Broad Street. More than one person has asked me why we feel it's important to maintain a presence here in the city. The answer is simple. We are absolutely committed to serve the students and the citizens of Trenton, and we will not abdicate that responsibility. But we cannot do this alone. We need partners, partners like Capital Health, partners who are as committed to Trenton as we are. Capital Health attends not only to the medical health and well-being of the Trenton community, they are also our partners in attending to the economic and educational well-being of this community, supporting our students from Trenton who want to pursue medical careers, and welcoming us as collaborators in the Trenton Neighborhood Initiative. St. Francis has provided key medical services to this community for many years, and Mercer County Community College has been a proud partner in the accreditation of the nursing and radiography programs. Capital Health has both the resources and the resolve to ensure that these educational programs remain in East Trenton. In addition, they will be able to continue critical services, including emergency room care, retain jobs, and improve facilities. Clearly, this is an organization that is serious about serving Trenton, and Mercer County Community College supports this transfer of services and looks forward to partnering with Capital Health in our mutual mission to serve the Trenton community. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry Jackendorf?
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm Harry Jackendorf, J-A-C-K-E-N-D-O-F-F, and I'm as an active member and leader of Villa Park Neighborhood Civic Association, and also as I operate the 12 Steps and More Mental Health Bookstore downtown at St. Michael's Episcopal Church. I'm in favor of the sale of St. Francis Hospital and the demolition of the existing building. One, given all the assurances of a prospective buyer, Capital Health Systems, that they'll maintain 24/7 emergency unit on the present in our neighborhood indefinitely. I had in the president's sight, but I understand now, and that they will not move the cardiac unit outside of our city but to Helene Fuld Hospital on Brunswick Avenue, as well as for all the reasons leading up to the sale provided to the public by its present owners, Trinity Health. And that also, I think, addresses the issues of transparency. I think we in the public sort of understand that the U.S. healthcare system has changed dramatically in the recent decades, and that the insurance industry is insisting that people don't stay in hospitals anymore, that people are put out of hospitals so that the beds aren't used. And that's one of the issues. In previous years, had they come to us and told us, "Well, the healthcare system is changing," we couldn't have done much as community members, except bemoan the same things we all bemoan. In any case, what I'm speaking about is not specifically the maintenance of the healthcare system, because our community, the ER unit, as far as I'm concerned, and that that's going to stay here, and the commitment to potentially build more, put OP-GYNE in there, and mental health, definitely. I just recently, because of the bookstore, I was looking at all the mental health and behavioral health providers in the city, went on the webpage, did a Google check, and of about 16 that came up, only four still had telephone numbers that I could reach. I was amazed. So that something, a centralized unit, and not just the small NGO 501(c)(3)'s that are all over our city, Capital Health has a lot of providers, and if we can get more behavioral and mental health people in a central, supported unit as far as healthcare is concerned, that's my suggestion. However, I do have a proposal here, which I will make public and I've given to Capital Health. What's most important to the neighborhood is what is going to happen in the remaining 80% of that 10-acre site. It's a half-mile walk around here. It's 1/64th of a square mile. It's 10 acres. That's a lot of building for a developer. That's a lot of ratable. But not only that, it's in the most vibrant corner of our city. This corner here, Hamilton Avenue and Chambers Street with the new high school, is potentially a new downtown. So it can be, and this, my neighborhood, is the whole Latino community is buying up in investing and rebuilding all the houses around here. So that's going to be an investment and something potentially, a jewel, that could be here on those 10 acres. That's a lot of mixed uses that could happen. So that when a major change in the horizon, and it is a horizon, which is St. Francis, it's a big building. It's zoned for that still. We don't need, you know, it could be anything. What I'm proposing is...
That's what I call, I have two minutes. One minute? You have 30 seconds.
30 seconds. I call it the Trenton 10 Acres Educational Experiment. I propose two competitions be announced, the first for elementary school classrooms, the second for individual students from ninth to 12th grade to participate in. The goal of each is to propose new use options for the integrated architectural and economic development of the site. They will be judged by three to four teams of college students, TCNJ, Ryders, Rutgers, Mercer County, working for credit to evaluate and choose the best proposals for each of the competitions. The three proposal for elementary school would win field trips for the coming year, and the kids, the individuals, would get monetary prizes and scholarships. The real thing is that...
Excuse me, sir.
I'll finish then. This whole town can be redeveloped. I'm proposing we educate ourselves using this site for how can cities be developed, how can people live together, and Trenton has a lot of wonderful corners to build. Thanks for letting me...
Thank you very much. Dr. Pasquale Luciano?
Good evening. My name is Pasquale Luciano, P-A-S-Q-U-A-L-E-L-U-C-I-A-N-O. I'm the cardiac surgeon at St. Francis Medical Center. At St. Francis, we have been providing cardiac care and have been part of the community since 1998. Our motto is, "We are the heart of the community." Unfortunately, the people of Trenton are at a higher risk for heart disease than the neighboring communities, at almost twice the rate. Health Department data demonstrates that our community has significantly higher rates of high blood pressure, high cholesterol, obesity, and coronary artery disease. The CDC reports that African-American residents of Mercer County have a heart disease death rate one and a half times the New Jersey average. Knowing this illustrates the importance of maintaining a high-quality, easily accessible cardiac surgery program in the city of Trenton. By joining with Capital Health's program of cardiac services and their greater resources, we have the opportunity to provide even better care to the community of Trenton. By becoming part of an existing healthcare system that offers trauma surgery, neurosurgery, and vascular surgery, we can take the cardiac surgery program to the next level. We also look forward to providing advanced electrophysiology care, mechanical support technology, and eventually minimally invasive and robotic surgery within the city of Trenton. In conclusion, I would like to emphasize, we are deeply committed to providing the highest level of care with the ease of access to the families of Trenton and the surrounding communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Darrell Armstrong?
I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Darrell Armstrong, D-A-R-R-E-L-L-A-R-M-S-T-R-O-N-G. I'm the pastor of the Shallow Baptist Church and founder of the Shallow Community Development Corporation. Shallow is Trenton's oldest Black Baptist congregation, founded in 1880. Six years after St. Francis Medical Center was founded in 1874, seven years before the Trenton City Hospital was founded in 1887, and 15 years before the Mercer Hospital was founded in 1895. As the pastor of this congregation, I have a divine commitment to promote issues of justice, equity, diversity, inclusion, and access in our capital city. I am personally in support of the transfer of cardiac care services in general and the specific certificate of need for cardiac surgery and cardiac care to the Capital Health system. In full disclosure, I'm a former board member of Capital Health Systems and a current member of the New Jersey Coalition of Religious Leaders, where we have a deep commitment to ensuring that children and families have what they need to promote and the promotion of the social determinants of health. I'm a member of the Greater Trenton Board, or Advisory Board, which is committed to the investment, economic investment of opportunities in our city, and I'm Vice President of the National Board of APSAC, the American Professional Society on the Abuse of Children, where we are concerned about trauma-informed services and evidence-based, community-based services that promote child and family well-being. As an ordained clergyman, I'm concerned about the whole person, the mind, and so therefore I partner with educational institutions like Mercer County Community College, welcome Dr. Preston to the Trenton area, and Thomas Edison State University with Dr. Mary D. Hancock. Concerned about the body, where I partner with medical institutions like CHS, RWJBH, as well as the Henry J. Austin Fairly Qualified Health Center. I'm concerned about spiritual services and the mental health services, where I partner with organizations like Children's Home Society of New Jersey, Prevent Child Abuse New Jersey, Children's Future, Mercer Street Friends, just to name a few, and deeply invested in partnering with religious bodies like Concerned Pastors and Ministers of Trenton and Vicinity, and UMO, the United Mercer Interfaith Organization. My bottom line is that we cannot afford to see another health establishment sit abandoned in our city. My support for the transaction and the transition of services from St. Francis to Capital Health should not be mistaken for an abdication of my prophetic role to hold institutions accountable. If this goes forward, which I have every confidence that it will, we have to learn how and others at CHS, what are the lessons that we take from the transition of Mercer Hospital campus into the Hopewell suburban community. We must continue to address the deserts that abide abundantly in our city, food deserts, mental health deserts, technology deserts, just to name a few. And we must be committed to providing economic employment opportunities and housing opportunities for the residents of the city of Trenton. I want to ensure that the city of Trenton is a great place for residents and children and families to live, work, play, and pray. And so with all confidence of my spiritual community, we support this, but we stand ready to work in partnership to provide opportunities for children and families in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Perilli?
Thank you, Board. My name's Richard Perilli, R-I-C-H-A-R-D, P-E-R-I-L-L-I. I'm a commercial property owner in the city of Trenton, and I'm most definitely a taxpayer. My opinion on the transition is neutral with an explanation, and I appreciate you allowing me to do that. A number of weeks ago, I've been compelled to assemble an online petition to save St. Francis Hospital in an effort to keep the St. Francis facility in place, or perhaps explore other avenues to ensure that there is adequate healthcare available in the southeast Trenton area. I've been to two meetings and have had the pleasure of speaking with Mr. Moen, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Magazi, along with Mayor Gussiura and Councilman Harrison, who have been instrumental in arranging these meetings for public input. I have spoken with Councilman Harrison at length about alternative possibilities to ensure the general healthcare needs in his ward are met. St. Francis is a wonderful facility, life-saving as well as life-giving. Along with many of us here tonight, I was born there, my first speech. However, they must be financially solvent in order to function, which is why we are at these crossroads tonight. It is understood that the St. Francis facility has many challenges, financial as well as the condition of the building structure, which have been pushed beyond its capability to operate. With that said, I would like to defer my efforts of the petition onto the shoulders of the state and federal government, perhaps not this board that is here tonight, but appropriate agencies and departments that can provide additional monies that, regardless of physical address or entity... of physical address or entity, would ensure that adequate healthcare remains in southeast Trenton. New Jersey, with its single-payer healthcare model, together with an increasing migrant population, is why the state and federal government need to come to the table with checkbooks, please. Many people in southeast Trenton are here, are at, I'm sorry, below the poverty level and do not have their own means of transportation that greatly impact their healthcare choices. Every night of the week, police bring a number of people to the E U R around 2:00 a.m., and I've been there to check up on that, to be held or cared for until they are able to start all over again the next day. And I am by no means, I'm totally opposed to that type of behavior. I would make a good cop and bad politician. I would lock up a lot of inner-city constituents. There are also drug overdoses, stabbings, as well as shootings, which create havoc with the hospital's ability to serve the general public. These are situations that ideally should not exist, but nonetheless, these are the cards that Trenton has dealt with every night that unfortunately are here to stay. So southeast Trenton needs a facility that is here to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sudhakar?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Telechery Sudhakar, T E L E C H E R Y S U D H A K A R, and I'm a retired kidney specialist. I have been associated with healthcare in Trenton and the surrounding communities for the better part of 50 years. I came to Trenton in 1974 as a member of the first-ever group of internal medicine residents at Hellenfold Medical Center and St. Francis Medical Center. It was a combined program then. It was during that time that I met my wife, a Uweing native, at Hellenfold Medical Center. After moving to DC for my nephrology fellowship and spending a few years outside New Jersey, my wife and I decided to move back home, and we have lived in this area ever since. This was in 1982. For nearly 35 years, I had the privilege of providing care for patients with kidney disease in Trenton. My office was in Trenton, and I provided care in all the area hospitals, including St. Francis Medical Center. In addition to private practice, I provided free care at nephrology clinics at all three hospitals in Trenton, and also provided care for hospitalized inmates with kidney disease at St. Francis Medical Center. I have cared for the insured, the underinsured, uninsured, and the undocumented. It is because of this long relationship to healthcare in Trenton that I have a keen understanding of this community's healthcare needs and feel a personal obligation to do everything I can to fulfill the needs. This is the reason for my service on Capital Health Board, Capital Systems Hospital Board since Capital Health's inception. I have served as chair of the Strategic Planning Committee of the hospital for most of those years. In the years past, healthcare was primarily focused on hospitalized care with long hospital stays. Surgical procedures were invasive, and there was limited access and emphasis, access to an emphasis on preventive care. Fortunately, healthcare has evolved nationally as well as locally for the better in the last couple of decades. There is more emphasis on preventive care, and there have been significant advances in advancements in technology and clinical practice standards. This has resulted in more and more care being appropriately transitioned to ambulatory and virtual settings. With hospital care limited to truly intensive care and reduced length of stay, communities like Trenton can no longer support multiple acute-care hospitals. I have fond memories of practicing at all the Trenton hospitals over the years and fully understand the sense of loss and anxiety regarding the continuation of needed medical services once St. Francis closes. Unfortunately, the reality is that closure of St. Francis Medical Center is not only inevitable, but actually imminent. Under these circumstances, I believe the most important obligation and responsibility of healthcare providers, community leaders, and officials is to assure and ensure that the community does not suffer the loss of services provided by St. Francis Medical Center, including preventive care, primary care, mental health care, and specialty care. Capital Health is uniquely qualified and positioned to make exactly such a commitment. We have a track record in Trenton that I'm extremely proud of. We have not only not abandoned Trenton, we have enhanced healthcare in Trenton, invested significant improvement in infrastructure at Regional Medical Center, and have developed tertiary-level programs at Regional Medical Center. We are committed to significantly increasing medical education programs and have rather ambitious plans for improving education and housing opportunities in Trenton. We will commit to continue to provide the services at Capital Health East Trenton with active engagement and dialogue with the community, be it with small group discussions or through more formal community advisory groups.
Yeah, you need, I'm sorry, but you need to.
Yeah, one sentence. It's my firm belief that the plans being proposed today will save services that need to stay in Trenton and will also provide a state-of-the-art, high-quality, community healthcare model moving forward. I thank you for your.
Thank you.
St. Francis Medical Center?
Is that her?
Thank you for hearing me today. I'm here because I'm a resident of Trenton. Oh, it's Joanne Gotay, J O A N N E G O T A Y. I was born and raised in Trenton. I work at St. Francis. Trenton is bad. We cannot deal with just one hospital. It's not gonna work. We have 93,000 residents. We cannot, we have shootings every day. We have stabbings every day. I worked in the emergency room in St. Francis. I've seen people sitting in rooms waiting. You know, if we can't handle it, how can one hospital handle it? And it just worries me about that. That's a big problem with us. And also, I'm sure that certificate will stay at Capital in full because it makes it one step closer to a B I B M Trauma One center. It's not because of they're trying to help St. Francis. If you're trying to help St. Francis keep it in the area. We have people who walk, who can't take taxi cabs. They don't have the money for it. We have patients who can barely pay their co-pays. They'll tell us, "If I have to pay cab into the hospital, I can't make my co-pay." That's heartbreaking. And that's, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the Teams call that would like to speak? Good on them.
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Who's speaking?
Who's speaking?
Teresa Johnson. There was another one before. John Gordon? Hello? Hello? Teresa? Yes? Hello, Teresa?
Yes.
There was a John Gordon that raised his hand before you, it looks like?
That's fine.
Okay. Mr. Gordon?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. State your name and spell it, please, and you have three minutes to speak.
Jonathan Gordon, J O N A T H A N, G O R D O N. I'm a former resident of Trenton, work in resiliency and sustainability currently. And I'd like to point out that Executive Order 23 from the governor states that every single state energy, state agency is required to look at every environmental justice community through a lens of resiliency. All of the regional hospitals that are surrounding Trenton are compromised in extreme weather events. If you were to remove a hospital in Trenton, you are, in a sense, this whole process needs to go back to the board and start looking at it in a sense of what is going to happen in the future when storms occur more, heat waves are more damaging to our community. There was a few medical professionals that mentioned that Trenton has serious heart disease issues. That's a major concern in heat events. And we need to be able to go back, look at a sense of resiliency, and follow the Executive Order 23. Otherwise, you're out of compliance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Teresa Johnson?
Yes.
State your name and spell it.
My name is Teresa Johnson, T H E R E S A, J O H N S O N.
Thank you.
I just wanted to really touch on the situation with the Heart Center going to Hellenfold. I am a heart patient at St. Francis. Me and my father, we both have heart disease and diabetes. Dr. Patel has put four stents in my heart. My father just had a slight heart attack on October 15th. He came home for one day and had to be rushed back to St. Francis. He has a weak heart. It is working at 35%. We almost lost him Sunday. If St. Francis was not there, I don't know what would have happened because my father literally thought he was gonna pass. And I think that the Heart Center needs to stay there. I am not in support of it going to Capital Health because people that have heart conditions need that there in case they have to be rushed there by an ambulance. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ianna?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. State your name and spell it.
Thank you. My name is Ianna Dikidjeva. My name, spelled I A N A, D like Delta, I K I, D like Delta, J I E V A. My remarks will be a little bit blunt tonight because the public is being given only three minutes to speak on a four-inch binder. And parenthetically, I do want to mention to everybody that the wonderful things that Al Magazi said earlier today are nowhere in this four-inch binder. That is not part of the material that was actually submitted to the public with very, very short notice. So there is that little discrepancy between what you were hearing from Capital Health today and what is actually written for the state to be considering and what was actually presented to the public for review. Basically, what I want to ask the state to do is, the only alternatives that Capital Health has considered in this entire four-inch binder is simply the full-on closure of St. Francis. Now, the community of Trenton understands that St. Francis cannot continue as is. We get it. We further get that, you know, we actually understand in great amounts of detail that when you take a community that has been this heavily redlined, and Trenton is more redlined now than it was at the time of actual redlining, when you have such a concentration of communities of color and poor residents into a community that the rest of the region does not really want to deal with, including you all sitting on this board, and in which the executives of all the institutions that you heard earlier today do not live in Trenton, would never let their children live in Trenton, and just generally have been hemorrhaging investment from this city, while at the same time putting their real investment in the suburbs, in the Hopewell campus? And then everybody says, "Well, you know, Trenton has too many beds and the demand is declining." Well, yeah, because everybody knows when they are being sent to the place that is the redlined asset. And everybody does everything that they can to go to the other place, the better place. And so what I'm asking this board to do is actually, you know, approve the acquisition, fine, but don't approve the closure because without asking Capital Health for an actual picture of their assets and how they are actually making investment regionally, and not considering Trenton and the demand from Trenton as only, you know, the people with the worst conditions, but actually as creating, the potential to create an entity that can actually serve the region more broadly, and where we're not perpetuating the same sort of like segregationist philosophy that got us here already. And finally, I want to state, Capital Health, again, in this four-inch binder, talks about charity care. I have had the experience of actually being a poor uninsured Trenton resident seeking charity care at Capital Health. What they have written in this binder, the pro forma things, I can't even call it a lie because that would imply that the people writing it had any relationship or understanding or knowledge of any sort of what they were actually speaking. It turned out as a plot point, actually, that my point of privilege was not just that I was, that I'm white, educated, and so on, it's that my significant other is six foot four and was able to physically carry me out of a wheelchair into the closet that Capital Health uses as their charity care office. There will be more in my written remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else here?
No, nobody else.
Okay, is there anyone?
Good evening. My name is Caroline Clark, and I am a resident of the city of Trenton.
Spell your name, please.
C L A R K E.
Thank you.
So I expected to be part of a community forum tonight. Instead, what I have been attending is a Capital Health pep rally. I have listened to just about every single organizational speaker supporting the closure of St. Francis. Of all the organizations that exist in Trenton, none of you support St. Francis staying open for the benefit of Trentonians? Not one? I heard a lot of stories, but what is fact is that we are a population of 90,000. We are low-income, we are uninsured, we are underinsured. Why are you all so comfortable talking about contracting health services for our community instead of expanding them, especially after the recent pandemic? We have a predominantly black population, and we all know that black maternal healthcare is a national as well as a local concern. How can you all stand here and with a straight face tell Trentonians that it's better for us to have less healthcare than we currently have? Shame on all of you.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Excuse me, could I speak?
Oh, in a moment, please.
My name's Jennifer Williams, J E N N I F E R, Williams, W I L L I A M S. And the word "community" covers a lot of sins, doesn't it? Whose community are we talking about? Because I can, let me tell you about two roads. One- One's called Olden Avenue, runs from Hamilton into Trenton, into Ewing. Another one is called South Broad Street, which turns into North Broad, just as South Olden turns into North Olden. And it also, 206, runs from Borden Town all the way up into Princeton. It runs through Trenton. If you were to take either of these roads, you can see the differences. They're not differences of what we made, it's differences of what the outside world made. When you're from Trenton, as I am, I'm a lifelong resident, you learn to expect certain things. That if you're from the suburbs, you'll be treated differently by government, by our institutions, certainly, as you're hearing tonight from our hospitals. Our lives do not seem to be as valuable as the ones in Hamilton, and Lawrence, and Princeton, and other places. We live in a city that has a 27% poverty rate and only has a 39% homeownership rate. Now, I'm not an economist. I don't have the exact details of what I'm about to say, but if you don't own a home, how likely are you going to have health insurance? This decision should be looked at as, you want to tear down a building which is no longer functional, which is no longer usable? Some said it may be dangerous personally. I just gave blood there a month ago, and as I walked in the door, a young Latina woman came in, had to hop out of a cab to use crutches because she had a broken leg to go into the hospital. And I'm thinking, I wonder how much it costs to take a cab just to go to a hospital, have a checkup maybe on a broken leg? You know already about the horrendous health disparities in urban communities, particularly Trenton. They're highlighted all across the country, a zillion stories, New York Times, Washington Post, et cetera. Why don't you replace this hospital with a new facility with high-level tech, all the medical care provided, an avant-garde facility to do research, be a point of the spear into correcting health disparities in urban communities, particularly in communities like Trenton, which are majority African-American and then Latino? Because to me, if this is decisions about money and a market, that would create a market, that would be taking financial advantage of trying to correct a national problem, making Trenton a model, St. Francis a model for what other smaller cities, mid-sized cities could be doing. Because we shouldn't have to go to New York, or Philadelphia, or other places to get medical care and also have research being done at what's going on in urban America. Having lived in New Orleans and Philadelphia, Thomas Jefferson had similar issues a while ago with center-city facilities and a changing population. They found ways around it. Now, granted, they've become gargantuan since. New Orleans, the same thing with Toro Medical Center. I went to Tulane University, I saw that hospital, and I saw what that hospital was able to do to Hurricane Andrew, and then I know what they did after Hurricane Katrina, when you have a population that cannot get out of town when a storm is coming, as someone mentioned earlier. But also, what happens if we have another act of terrorism, such as Trenton and Mercer County was the center of the anthrax attacks right after 9/11? Please, consider this. Make this facility an avant-garde research facility for curing and solving the ills of urban America. Because if you know the cardiac care license will be a part of that, there are so many other things you can come. And we're not just a city of gunshot victims. There are people who just need basic medical care. Most of the city is that. So, please, don't perpetuate this image that we're a violent city in every single darn corner that is filled with gunshots, because we're not. Thank you and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.
We have one more online. David, he was here first.
We have one more on there.
Chad. Chad, go ahead, state your name and spell it.
Chad Johnson, C H A D, J O H N, S O N. I'd like to speak on behalf of St. Francis Medical Center. I believe the hospital should stay open. It's close to us for people to get to in case of emergency situation, like my grandfather who had a heart attack. If he didn't get there on time, he could have died at home or in the ambulance. And he got open-heart surgery there back seven years ago. If Phil Murphy could give Cooper Hospital over $2 billion to fix their hospital, then he could give us the $1 million to put into St. Francis Medical Center. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, do proximity first. Please.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Chikowski, and I am the Program Director for the CARES Program located at St. Francis Medical Center. My name is spelled M I C H E L E C Z E C H O W S K I.
Did you already speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So, as I mentioned, my name is Michelle Chikowski, and I am the Program Director for the CARES Program at St. Francis Medical Center. I've been with this program since its inception in 2003, and I thank you for allowing me to voice my support for the transfer of St. Francis to Capital Health. The CARES Program provides intensive compassionate treatment to children ages 3 through 21 who do not require inpatient care but who have emotional behavioral difficulties impeding their ability to succeed. We serve Medicaid-eligible children and are the only program locally that cares for children with intense behavioral and high acuity needs. I already received numerous calls from various schools and surrounding boards of education asking if CARES will remain open, and I replied, "Yes." Immediately, I heard a resounding "thank God" from all. The most important thing to understand is that CARES is a key component, if not the core, of pediatric behavioral health in Mercer County. The earlier we support and provide a better quality of life for the children and parents we serve, the more health and prosperity we provide to our entire community. Some of the children in our program present with highly aggressive, defiant, or self-destructive behaviors resulting from abuse, violence, substance abuse, death, divorce, or abandonment. The struggle with social or school phobia, obsessive-compulsive disorder, anxiety, depression, PTSD, mood disorders, and/or bipolar are all represented. Some also have suicidal thoughts and self-injurious behavior. We treat every child as an individual and strongly believe that every person, no matter their age or life experience, deserves a chance to be heard, seen, and to be treated with respect, kindness, and dignity. We offer two levels of care. The first is full-day partial hospitalization, where children attend our program during school hours and receive intensive therapy along with one-to-one support from licensed teachers to complete their schoolwork. They participate in group therapy that covers the full gamut of topics for exploration. Each child is assigned a licensed clinician who provides individual and family therapy at least once a week. Meals are provided, and in most cases, door-to-door transportation. The second level of care is the outpatient program, where children and their families meet weekly with a therapist for individual and/or family therapy to identify, resolve issues related to home, school, and social situations. Medication management and psychiatric evaluation is also available. Our team of counselors, clinicians, teachers, and APN and psychiatry provide children and families with the tools to cope with and manage their challenges. It is critical to our community that we maintain this program by transferring it to Capital Health. If the transaction is approved, all of the team members hope to continue in their roles as part of Capital Health. Throughout the transition planning, we have had an open and transparent dialogue with Capital Health, which is promoting a positive working synergy amongst the organizations. Please approve the transfer of St. Francis Medical Center to Capital Health to ensure the essential services remain for our children, families, and larger community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yuki, Y U K I, Moore, M O O R E, Laurenti, L A U R E N T I. We are late because we actually only got this notice yesterday in our mail and adjusted our calendars in order to be here. I live at 464 Hamilton Avenue, and if anyone happens to be from this community, that is two blocks away. I wish to second the remarks of Joanne Gotay and Ayana Dikidjeva. I've been in this community for 40 years. We live on the way for the ambulances going and coming from St. Francis. Our community, I don't know how many of you live in it, is a largely immigrant population. We say that it has a different latinity from when we first moved to Chambersburg. Many people in our community do not have cars, and I know that because we live there. We see the buses that they take, we see the vans that come and pick them up to take them to work. We recognize the economics of hospitals, but we, doing picking up the word of "community", would hope that you will all think about those of our members who are in our community who do not have cars, who do travel by bus, and the difficulty that it will take to get to the facilities that Capital Health has today. I'm very fortunate that I have a car, and I have a job, and I'm able to get where I need to go. I've certainly walked down, when I've had an emergency situation, as has my husband, to St. Francis. But I think about those in my community who are not easily going to be able to get to a new facility, and I do hope, as others have talked about, that you will think about the community of members who live here and the difficulties that they will encounter, and to keep some type of appropriate health care in this community, not in East Trenton and not out in Hopewell. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Laurenti, L A U R E N T I, also living at 464 Hamilton Avenue, Trenton, two blocks from here. And I recall from the days of my youth, the barge singing, "The words of the prophets are written on the subway walls." And I had a sense that Ayana Dikidjeva and Caroline Clark, to us, represented the words of the prophets in many ways. And that is, we have not had an opportunity, a public hearing, at which to express the desire of our community to keep a hospital, to keep St. Francis open as a full-blown hospital. I have had to go there for emergency services and have been reassured by there being other facilities there to which, if my condition required it, I could immediately be referred. The assurance that, and I quote now from the letter that we got yesterday, "At least for the near term, the emergency department will be allowed to continue there." And we are then told that, long-term, Capital Health will develop a new emergency department, and I should emphasize outpatient site. There is nothing in the discussion about what happens to the prison care that is currently made at St. Francis Hospital for inmates needing medical attention from New Jersey State Prison and other facilities of the Department of Corrections, and one doesn't know whether that's already been booked into another hospital wherever. It would be good to know that, what we can expect in that regard. And my sense is that the community's voice needs to be heard in the deliberations of the state, not simply in whether to transfer the, what is the crown jewel of St. Francis, the cardiac unit, to the Capital Health facility, presumably the one on Brunswick Avenue, which is where I was born, which is where I was born, incidentally. But instead, to keep open the facility, because as Yuki said, this side of town has 50,000 people, and many of them are low-income immigrants who don't have transportation choices, and that should be our priority. We've gone through a whole national effort to try to expand health care opportunities, and closing this hospital in this city, in this neighborhood, goes entirely contrary to that need. So, if Capital Health wants to make an investment in this hospital, let it make an investment in the hospital, not shut it down. That would be our hope.
Sir, could I trouble you for your, the letter?
No, it's your letter. Not your letter, it's Capital Health's letter. I just have notes on it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else I would like to speak? Okay, here is nothing else. On behalf of the Board, we truly appreciate all of your comments, your input. The process will continue to go on. We hope that you'll continue to provide input into process, both in writing, in reaching out to affected people, and you can attend our Board meeting when that is scheduled also. It will be posted to the website. No.
Do you know when it'll be?
Well, time-wise, it's during the day. It's a regular State Health Planning Board meeting, which normally begins at 9:15. 9:30, sorry. 9:30.
Is there an option to call in?
If you're speaking online, please state your name. If you're speaking online, please state your name.
Sure. My name is Aparna Choudhury, and I was just asking questions about that other meeting because it seems like it's in the morning, and so I was asking for clarification on that. Thank you.
Can you spell your name for the court reporter, please?
Sure. A P A R N A. My last name is C H O W, D H U R Y. I wanted to make some comments, but I couldn't unmute, but it's all right.
You have time if you want to make a comment.
I'll be really brief. I just wanted to second the comments from the Laurentis and the Voice of the Community. Disclosure is going to have a profound, it's going to have profound and long-reaching effects in this area. It's part of a larger trend of hospitals leaving inner cities with detrimental effects, couched in euphemistic terms. St. Francis didn't just deteriorate, it was permitted to reach its current state, which isn't necessarily where people in the neighborhood would like it to be. It does need improvement, but closing it down is going to increase health problems and health disparities to full effect. I wanted to just basically second the idea that transportation is a major area, and this area has a concentration of population, thousands and thousands of people are impacted by this and minutes matter in terms of health care. I appreciate the impassioned pleas of those who are impacted. I think that although people are sometimes not able to be articulate in their defenses concerning maintaining Francis being open as a health, much-needed health care facility, it doesn't undercut the importance of those reasons. There's going to be very real capital effects in the community, and also in a business sense, the area is going to be impacted. I agree with Mr. Laurenti, this is a mandate. I understand there's economic concerns, safety, transfer processes, and it's a target that qualifies, and therefore improves them. However, to leave the entire half of Trenton undeserved, that to me is a very real fear. You know, St. Francis is part of an epic, in a health sense, more importantly. There is, besides the economic, there's a mandate, there's a social contract which seems to be being broken through this. It's an important part of our healthcare. Trenton's population is increasing, and we need to have close access to health. That's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Friend?
Yeah.
Hello.
I'd like to speak.
State your name, spell it. State your name and spell it.
Hello?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'd like to know why, everybody claims they got letters about the hospital, but why didn't over here on Cove Street, we didn't get any letters about the hospital, nobody? And I want to tell you, back in 1997, that hospital, St. Francis, was one of the best hospitals and the best doctors around. Because they did my back operation in 1997, St. Francis, and I never had a problem since. So I just want to thank you and tell you people.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, once again, thank you all for being here, appreciate your input, and look forward to your continued input into this process.
Thank you.